It went off, so I had to.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
It's on. Yeah, right now.
So, before we get into A and F, you want to start with the special event applications?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. There are just two, and it's just two special event applications, just for discussion right now, and then they'll be on the next meeting for you to vote on. The first one is the Surfside Seven Rugby Tournament. This is not to be confused with the Super Sevens Rugby Tournament, which is in September.
I did get confused, okay, it is a different one.
This is, this is the one that they've done every year. It's on July 13th. It's Saturday, and it's pretty much the whole day, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. This is the Philadelphia White Marsh Rugby Football Club. They use the 80th Street Fields for their annual rugby tournament. They're just, they're requesting the stage, trash receptacles, they'll need some electric for their speakers. They'll supply their own tents, they'll line the fields. They set up and break down all their equipment as well. They are required to get a fire permit for their barbecue prior to the event. They also are required to submit a updated insurance certificate prior to the event. I don't have that yet, but they will, they will have that before the event starts. And the next one is the Flyers, formerly known as the Trial on the Isle. It is a much smaller event than it has been in the past. This is, they're going to start around 9:30 with an event at the theater, which we really don't have any part of, except they're requesting that the mayor speak there. Following that, they're going to have an autograph session at the Stone Harbor Elementary School. And all they're asking for there is some no parking signage on the street adjacent to the school, so they can transport their equipment. And then they're going to have a beach volleyball session at 95th Street Beach. And it's just the players that are going to play, there's no, the public is not going to be allowed to, to play this year. And I have everything from them, I have their insurance certificate and the application as well. And it is all signed off, I just need to get one more signature, actually.
So, what's going on at the movie theater is not a public event, correct?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Where they used to unload at the firehouse, and it was a public event, this is all kind of private?
Yeah, that's going to be coordinated with the theater.
Okay.
They're going to watch a movie, have like a motivational speaker, so there may be some public involvement there, but it's not with the borough.
Okay.
That's, yeah, a part of it will be private. But they do, they're asking for, for you to be there, just for like a while.
And I saw one little note that says 9:30 a.m. at the theater, is that what time that I would, they want me to be there?
Approximately, yeah. We'll, we'll confirm.
I can confirm that, okay.
As soon as we get closer. And that is actually on June 27th, I don't know if I said that, Thursday, June 27th.
Okay. Yeah, that is a big difference from the past, okay.
Yeah, well, she said they had some management changes, so they almost were not going to do it at all. And then they just decided to scale it down to a smaller event, so, you know, perhaps next year it'll be different.
Okay.
And that, yeah, that is, that's it.
When is the, I'm confused, when is the beach volleyball?
That's going to be from 3:30 to 5:30.
On what day?
On that Thursday, the 27th.
27th, that's a Thursday.
So, they'll be at the school first, from probably like noon to about 3:00, and then to the beach. Now, they'll set up the volleyball themselves, they'll be setting that up at like 7:00 a.m. though.
Okay.
So, it doesn't interfere with people, like being on the beach. They want to have it set up before people start going to the beach.
Okay.
Is there a room on that beach now? I haven't been to that one lately.
Where on the 90th?
Between 95th and 96th.
There should be, yeah, I think there is.
High tide, low tide?
Jenny, want to add in the email that we received today?
Yeah, we received an email today from the film shoot for Sunday. They had requested two streets that they were going to be filming on, and they've changed, they only need one now, it's just going to be, I think, 121st Street. The hours for that were like, he's just going, he's shifting it an hour. Instead of three to five, it's four to seven, or four to six. And then, but he has one additional shot that they want to take at 7:00 in the morning at one of the beach entrances at 121st Street.
122nd.
20th, 22nd.
20th.
I just, I literally got this at 2:30. So, and they're, they'll be there prob, it'll only going to be seven people, they just want to take a shot of kids riding their bikes down the path to the street. So, that is.
And that's the 100 o'clock?
Well, in the morning.
I thought it was at night, I was thinking.
No, in the morning.
122nd.
122nd beach entrance.
Doesn't require any street closures, he says?
No.
Okay.
No, it's just the, the beach access will be restricted while they're.
Okay.
Riding their bicycles.
The gate is closed all the time, right? We're talking about going down onto.
They're coming towards the street.
Clamshell Road. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, the point access or the beach access?
He's on the beach.
Yeah, he says beach path, but what's he mean?
It says where the street meets the beach path.
Which one does it want?
So, we'll have to verify that, yeah.
Because I thought he was going down the Clamshell Road. And there's a yellow mark, a yellow closure, because you can't.
That's 123, that would be considered 123.
Okay.
It's a beach, that's all picture, it's the actual beach path.
Correct, that's 123rd.
Okay.
He's saying 122nd.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we will confirm that with them. But it will, it would be an hour, and it is something additional that council did approve.
That it was, was not on the original, just from 7:00 to 8:00.
Okay. Well, he says he's, he attached a picture, so we shouldn't have to.
I looked for the picture, I couldn't find it.
Yeah, I don't see it either.
I'm better with pictures.
Okay. You can just confirm that.
I'll get him to forward a photo.
Okay.
But he doesn't, yeah, he shouldn't need any kind of, you know, be, road closing or anything there.
So, are we going to need a motion to approve that as amended?
I, I think that would.
We can do that at the regular meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to, on behalf of council, just thank you for all of your hard work on the Memorial Day holiday. I think everything went extremely well.
Thank you, it was a busy weekend.
It did.
Great job, well done.
Thank you.
Okay, next up then, engineers' report.
Good, thank you. All the work for the 2018 Utility and Row Program is completed, and we are currently working on punch list items and project closeout. As authorized at the last council meeting, we have started to work on the following three capital projects for this year. They are number one, the 2019 Utility and Row Program; number two, 114th Street Sanitary Sewer Pump Station and Forceman Improvements; and number three, and lastly, the beach ADA Ramp and Pavilion Replacements. Lastly, the NJDOT has announced that they are accepting grant applications for roadways, bicycles, and pedestrian projects. That grant application deadline is July 19th, so we would like to work with Public Works and Jill to identify some candidates and bring a resolution before you guys at the next meeting to authorize submission, as we would normally do each year. That is my report.
Anybody else have anything for the engineer? Okay, moving right along, tax collector.
Tax collector.
Let's try tax assessor.
I don't have much to report, although I am extremely busy in my office. From May 1st through May 24th, I had 22 usable sales, which is a big number. At the county level, we settled 10 tax appeals, we won one, and we postponed one until the 20th of June. At this point, we have 21 state tax appeals to work on. And, you know, just normal business deeds, address changes, deductions, that kind of thing. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, construction and zoning.
As Margaret said about the 21 transfers, there's only five last May, and we had 21 property transfers this May, which kept Roger and I busy doing those inspections. There were 24 zoning permits this month of May, where last year was 14, and 19 street openings where last year was 10. So, Construction Office has been very busy compared to a year ago. It may have to do with the demo and the piling ordinance, that they can't do them, it's just, it's kept us hopping for this month and last month.
My voice is a little lost this weekend, I was, I sang in a heavy metal band this weekend, so that's why it didn't, joking.
You got to tell us that.
Last, last year, there were six new homes, as opposed to four new home permits issued this, this month, same time last year. And the demos were flip-flopped. There were six demolitions this month, this year, and four last year. So, it's kind of, it's right there, about the same, it's, nothing's really changed too much as far as what's issued new and demolitions. It's, there were like four dumpster permits this year, as opposed to three last year. So, it's pretty much balancing out the same as it was last year. I don't know if that's all I have.
Does anybody have any questions, comments?
It's not, not really for, I think it's more for Mark, but I, I rode around the island the other day, last, last week, and I, I only counted about four or maybe five eight-foot bulkheads that have gone in. Does that sound right? Is that all we've done so far? Because, and the reason I'm asking is, I see a lot of houses that are torn down, and I see no action on bulkheads at all on those lots, so I'm just trying to figure out, how are we enforcing this ordinance, you know, like? Yeah, I mean, I thought if we demolished a house and put up a new one, or if we had 40 percent, was it 40 percent?
Mm-hmm.
The value of the property that we were going to require the bulkhead to come up to, I originally thought it was eight feet. Is that, are we doing that or not? What are we doing?
We have been, yes, definitely, when they come in with a new permit.
Yeah, they can't get their CO until the bulkhead is brought up.
I think, Ray, some of them may have newer bulkheads that are at the slightly lower height, and I think they're required to, if the engineer approves it, be able to cap that and bring it up to eight.
No, I, I get that.
So, you won't see a massive replacement in those instances, is what I'm guessing. So, you won't see a brand-new bulkhead win.
But I think it's odd that it's some, some of them, you know, the house is three-quarters done.
Yeah.
And the bulkhead, there doesn't appear to be any modifications to the bulkhead at all, so I'm just.
So, I, I think we've processed a little over 10 since the ordinance went into effect, so we're processing what, what comes to us.
And some, some of them, without looking at the, each block and lot individually, some of them may have been ones that actually came in and applied for their permits before the ordinance was adopted.
Right.
So, then they wouldn't have to comply, but we can certainly look at all those.
Right, I, I understand that, some of them may already have permits, but then, the Construction and Zoning Office is, if a house comes down, you go to eight feet.
Correct.
And if it's 40 percent or so, and you have a relatively new bulkhead, you can cap it, but we're still going eight feet. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the.
Two of the, two of the houses that did come in, they came in and talked to me, and I, we denied them because of the bulkhead issue, and they came in and showed me that their bulkhead was already at the eight feet. So, then we issued that permit accordingly.
Okay, yeah, good, yeah, okay.
If they get, if they get a new survey of the property, and that's one of the things that we're asking them for, is to hide at the top of the bulkhead, to prove that.
Yeah, because I, I understand that, like, some, there are some areas where the ground's so high that your eight-foot bulkhead doesn't necessarily look like an eight-foot bulkhead, but yet it is an eight-foot bulkhead.
Right, right.
So, I mean, and there's some of that mixed in, too, so, okay, but we're all then uniform in how we're.
Yeah.
We're all, we're all communicating pretty much.
Pretty much, in there.
Daily, probably, a lot.
Yeah, he's in our office way too much.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So, personally, I have two examples. I'm doing a job on Corinthian, and that is a very low bulkhead, and that will be replaced, but you're right, we're three-quarters done construction, and that bulkhead installation is really delayed because of contractor delay. So, that's one instance there, and then I have another project I own at 11501 Paradise on the bay, and that bulkhead's newer and is actually at eight feet. So, those are kind of two examples of what.
It depends on the grade.
Yeah.
Because there are a lot of properties up toward, or down south end that are, the grades are higher, so they, they're going to get the bulkhead at least a foot, a two foot out of the ground. It could already be at eight foot, easily.
Yeah, it's just odd, you know, because, because you, you would think when somebody's going through that massive of a project, the first thing they're doing, do is the bulkhead, before they start building, but evidently, that's not.
Well, they could do it from the, from the, the waterward side, if they choose to, but it's a lot easier to do it, you know.
Okay, so we're good then, good to go. Thank you.
We did have a, a young man that fell on 85th Street at the job site, and they medevaced him because of the height of where he fell from. But I talked to the contractor, and he said that the guy broke a couple, cracked a couple ribs, and that was it, so he was okay.
Very lucky.
But, um, we haven't seen anything of OSHA yet come into town because of that, so we'll, I get to get a phone call from them.
You will.
He said they were all safe, he said everything was up, they had all guardrails and safety nets, so they should have been okay anyway.
Wow, okay.
But he checked in good, so.
Okay.
Anything else for construction? The CFO is looking at schools with his son, so he's not here today, so we'll catch up with his report later. Borough Clerk?
I don't have any report tonight, except that I have three boat slips still available, if anybody would like to come and look at them. That's all I have.
Planning Board.
Planning Board, we met on the 13th of May, and at that meeting, we went through the changes to the master plan as a board. Some revisions were made to what is now becoming, it's going, the public hearing is the 10th of June. Couple small revisions were made. Paul Cates took care of them. The Planning Board now, the new revision is advertised, the public hearing is advertised, and it is going to be held June 10th at 4:30. We did hold, was it the 24th or the 17th? The 24th, we've held in the event that we make significant changes following the public hearing, it would give us time to advertise, should any changes be made. So, the public hearing is June 10th, the plan is out there for the public, for public dissemination, and we'll have that public hearing on June 10th. And that was the extent of the business with the Planning Board.
The only other item that we did bring up was outdoor dining, and we resolved to work through that through the summer, probably not ready for ordinance form before the summer or during the summer, but.
As there was some discussion to not bother even discussing it, because summer will be in full swing, but instead, if it gets instituted in September, so be it. So, Paul Cates is working on some more ideas to bring back to us, but no, nothing definitive.
Nothing definitive, but I think the consensus of the board was that it would actually be good to have it launch perhaps in the fall season, when we have a little bit less crowds on our streets on the weekends, and it would be.
And could be a draw.
Yeah.
And that's the Planning Board report.
Okay. It's everything for A and F.
Okay, Public Works.
Do you want to go over the requests for exemptions first, and then we'll do the report?
Sure. So, the first one is Sky Jewels. They purchased three cartons of bags, they've used one carton so far, they're asking to be able to use those branded bags for the remainder of 2019. They do have a receipt that's dated May 3rd of 2018, is when they placed their order. Right, and we started to discuss this in the summer of 2000, right, June of 2018, they had already purchased. So, for the remainder of 2019 would be six months, then to December 31st, 2019. Does anybody see any issue with that? Sky Jewels, who's next? Jill, 22496th Street. Due to high shipping costs, I purchase all of my items in bulk for use over a few seasons. I've attached invoices from 2018 for items such as kids cups, plastic souffle cups, to-go containers, bags, clear pass cups, plastic utensils. So, we were given a copy of an invoice. I'm looking for the date. August of 2018 is when it was ordered. Any discussion on that with the date of that invoice? And what timeframe are they asking for?
There's another invoice at 7:13, I think, same person, hope, maybe not, never mind.
Is it?
No, no.
I see August 6th.
Okay, got it.
Yes, you're right, there was a 7:13 for the same person, a July 13th.
How long do they want?
They're not asking for a set amount of time. I would like to be able to use these items before ordering compostable ones.
They don't have anything that's adhering anything right now, it sounds like all of their products, right? Kids cups, plastic souffle cups.
Kids cups, plastic souffle cups, to-go containers, bags, clear plastic cups, and plastic utensils. Again, if we tell them they can't use the items, what do they do with them but throw them away? But there is, some ordering was done after the, the initial discussion of the ordinance, but not the, when was the first introduction of this ordinance? Does anybody, that was, I can remember discussing it in August. I think we started in like June.
Yeah, I think we discussed it for most three months, and August might have been the, you know, the end.
So, any opinion, anybody have any opinion on this?
I'm, I'm always of the frame of mind, in year one, this is to be deliberately grant relief where there's supplemental evidence to show that, you know, they purchased these things. I think the, again, I said, the public announcement of our movement is almost as important as actual enforcement of the same, to get the word out that this is where we're headed. It's going to, there's going to be an adjustment period, there's going to be businesses that run into these difficulties. I don't think any of these businesses willfully or purposefully are violating our ordinance, so in that regard, I think we should grant this liberally.
So, would we say until December 31st?
Well, would if.
That would be my, that would be my suggestion.
With the caveat that if they run out of something, they're not going to buy more plastic.
Correct.
So, I think that has to be.
Correct.
Some of these things they might run out of over the summer, I would hope so.
I, I think that's implicit.
Right, I would imagine, right. So, what, they are, what does, what does, do they specifically ask for? Till they run out, correct? Till they run out?
I think December 31st is the end of the.
Whatever comes first.
Is very reasonable, gives them the whole season plus the fall.
Or, yeah, or, or when you run out.
Or when you run out, whichever comes first.
I, I think I asked last time, the ordinance includes, it's, we can only give these exemptions for a year, correct?
Correct.
So, we have to look at it, I think, in that we're getting where we want to go.
Mm-hmm.
And we, you know, we could have envisioned this, and we did envision this somewhat, that's why it's in the ordinance, but I don't think it behooves us to strong-arm anybody and, you know.
No, I agree.
So, I think we, we should just, they're all documented, I'd rather we didn't have them, but we do have them, so I don't see any, I don't see any alternative, but to go along with it for remainder of this year and next year, there's no excuses.
Right, I would agree with that.
And I, and I do agree with that, and I'm looking at, they have 50, or they, they bought 50 hot cups last year and 50 hot cup lids, and they might only have, I don't think they have 50 left for this year, so if we just encourage that when they run out of something, that they understand it, it doesn't matter, I can buy the same thing.
So, it will be December 31st, 2019, or until you run out, whichever comes first?
Correct.
And we can always include in our response back to them, just as a reminder to them that they cannot reorder anything that's not compliant.
Yeah, because they've got straws down there, too, 250 of them, that they probably gave out 100 last year, maybe, I don't know.
Okay. They have invoices as well. Full cases, 1,000 pieces per case of a lot of different items, they ask that these items remain available for use until the inventory is depleted or until the end of the season, whichever comes first. They're saying they should be depleted by the end of June or early July. So, they should be done by the end of the season. Okay?
End of summer.
So, we could do Labor Day, end of the season?
Mm-hmm.
They're thinking they're going to be done by early July.
You're getting all that right?
She says, I will send you proof of purchase ASAP, have we seen it?
I think so.
Yeah, we don't have any proof of purchase on that one yet.
Do you have anything?
Not yet. How do people feel about that, we don't have any proof of purchase, should we put it off?
I think we ought to do a pending proof of purchase, so that we don't have it two weeks from now.
So, we don't have to wait, okay. Asking to use up what I have in terms of bowls, cups, and lids. So, pending the proof of the purchase, the same thing through the season, or till it's gone, whichever comes first. She's not asking for a specific amount of time. Purchase 6,000 bags last year, we still have 2,000 left from last year, feel necessary to use these bags, haven't purchased any since we received the ordinance, hoping you'll let us use the rest of these plastic bags, because the paper bags just can't take the weight of the jars or the mess if they happen to get dropped. So, what's the receipts on them? 8/31/18, bought last year. Okay, anybody have anything specific on that to offer? Same thing, season or till it's depleted, okay.
Clark's Market.
They've been unable to procure materials necessary to be compliant, working with other They're requesting be able to deplete their hand-on supply while they seriously attempt to purchase necessary items from different suppliers, their supplier has been hacked. Discussion? I have no, we have no receipts, so same thing, pending receipts?
Well, they've got, you know, food in containers, and they've got the plastic bags at the counter, and we love Clark's, trust me. It's just, there has to be a, how much you have on hand.
We do not know, we can find out. Let's find out what they have on hand and get a little bit more information, maybe some invoices for that. And we can say pending the invoices and finding out what's on hand, and then the same thing, we don't have to come back and do this in two weeks.
Yeah, because they've got lots of.
So, you're saying end of season?
Containers in their thing with food in them.
Okay.
May I ask that someone refresh my memory, because maybe everybody knows the answer to this, but I couldn't remember? Someone asked me yesterday, what is the punishment or fine for those who do not comply?
I would have to see the ordinance. $250?
I, I think it's 250. I think it, I, I think I remember.
I didn't remember it at all, so I didn't know if we did give indeed a figure.
Yes, there's a monetary figure in there, yes, I want to say about 250.
I think it actually says, first violation is a warning, and the second violation is 250.
And who is going to police it? Is that in there as well?
I think it can be enforced by the police department, but as far as them walking I think it can be enforced by the police department, but as far as them walking in and like checking, that's not gonna be spot checking or anything. It'll be more, I think, I would envision it comes to our attention.
And it will.
And it will.
If I get a complaint, then?
Yeah.
When we send out our decisions to them, are we asking them to let us know when they are empty of those products? Because I think we, they've gotta own up to at least saying, "I'm done." They should be writing back to us. I mean, are we asking for a reply back?
We could add, "Please notify us as soon as you're-"
Yeah.
Yep, as soon as you're in compliance.
I think for our own records, we should have that.
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that. Please advise us as soon as you've depleted this supply, and then we'll know, and it's done. So either it's depleted, or the season's over.
And I've heard a lot of positive about this. I don't know, maybe other people are hearing other things, but I've heard people-
Heard there's no more plastic straws at Wawa.
I heard that too.
And paper bags are being given out at the Wawa.
Yeah, but I've heard people telling other merchants, "You gotta get rid of your styrofoam containers." So I do think that it's, you know, whisper down the lane, or up the lane.
Hearing criticism too, but you're gonna get that.
Yeah, well, that's always there.
That's all of them, so we'll do them as motions at the regular council meeting. So back to Public Works, right? Somebody?
Grant, Grant's not able to be here today, so we have a guest speaker.
Oh, it's a guest speaker.
He's going to fill us in on masterworks or Public Works.
Masterworks.
Do that.
That's a good one, I like that.
Reports are usually amusing from Rocky.
Hello, everyone. Like Grant always says, "I'm sure you guys read it." And it's long. And there's a lot of stuff in here that we do all the time, and as you can see, our town, we are busy. Our town is fully up and running. The beach is open. Concession stands were painted, repaired, roofs were redone, and there are on the beach in all locations. The hobby cats, four-by-fours were erected, numbers were put there. Believe there's some fencing was done behind them. That's all taken care of as well. The vehicle ramps and crossovers are inspected and clear as needed, which in the last few weeks has been nonstop, but that's been done, you know, constantly. The trash pickup on the beach, all public cans are being done again daily. The security gates are finished, and they're up. The one, two, the point is closed most of the time, although it does have an area that bikes can go through it, so people can still can get by. All the other ones are open, I guess unless we're told differently. Parking meters and kiosks are up, and they're working. Couple little bugs there in the beginning, but I believe that they're, right now, everything is working. Still working, still working on the replacement of our street signs, which is a lot of work. But, because, you know, we're replacing poles too on the signs, and the new ones look real nice. 97th Street Rec Center, we put a new roof on it, shingles, and we are replacing all the soffit. That's not completed yet, because we had other things to take care of. Three new holly trees were planted here on Second Avenue, one on 94th, one on 95th, and then one on 96th. So we're hoping that the one here is mighty and survives. The new video camera, or system that we bought for water and sewer, we have been using it. It's already been, playing a key role in us finding problems with our, sometimes our new piping, and new stone drain pipes, being able to give reports to RV and whoever may need one. So, money well spent. Marina is fully running. All the docks are in, all the stuff was removed. And most of our, some of our employees are in. They're in now, but for the report was produced, most of them were in. And that's pretty much it as far as key things. There's many more, but I'm pretty sure you don't want to go through each one of them. So, any questions?
We're continuing to do that second trash pickup, right, on the beach, on the main beaches that we started last year?
My understanding is that we're going to once the season requires.
Is in full swing. It's nothing that's happening right now, okay?
Right now, we're not, because of that.
Rocky, I asked last, the last meeting, and I just wanted to, this statistic, on page five, water statistics? What does that mean, total pumped? Is that the total water usage in Stone Harbor?
No, total pumped is what we draw out of the ground. So it's pumping to the system. So then, that's when you add, you start adding what the people are consuming, what we're using on our flushing, or our different meters, and then you add everything. Then you calculate also whether or not we may have leaks somewhere, we lost water somewhere.
But, yeah, but wouldn't total pumped equate to total use?
Everything, yeah.
Right, that's what I would think, six, one half dozen of the other.
So it-
You wouldn't pump it if you weren't using-
Have a little bit of storage to-
Right, you wouldn't think, right. So, I just, those same numbers hit me that, you know, that's like a 40% increase this April over last April.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, over 3 million gallons more we pumped. And I don't understand, like, how do we, how do we account for that size-
For that difference.
Of a jump in, in, in one year? And last month's was the same, same kind of number, you know? We don't really know.
We just- That's when we add, like I was saying, that's when we add all the numbers from all the meters, new homes, bigger services. We add what we use in our stations, what we use in our own properties. We try to add whatever the properties that we don't keep records of. And then on top of it, any leaks. Sometimes there might be leaks that we're not aware of, you know, and so on, so.
Can you attribute to different, like, in your mind, you just say, "Oh, this is easy, I know why." Would you know why? Is it irrig-
Usually, we, we always, you know, there are some years that we talked about leaks, you know, through the winter. Other times, we, we talked about the bigger services, irrigation. That's what we constantly watching people, you know, irrigating when they're not supposed to. So, we always trying to find reasons, including our own system, you know, make sure that our mains are not leaking, that everything is, that's why we take both numbers, you know, what we draw out of the ground and what it was built for.
I mean, I look at that, and all things being equal, I can't imagine it's anything else but, you know, increased construction.
So I wonder what 2017 was?
Yeah, I mean, we have those records, we, you know, we can-
Yeah, so I'm just curious if you saw the 30-
Yeah, we can go in and-
Was it, was, was, they're just as big of an increase from 17 to 18, and then 18 to 19?
Like that one year that we had massive amount of leaks, you know, those numbers-
Right, that one winter was, yeah.
You know, so.
Yeah, we can do, we'll do an analysis of it.
Keep an eye on.
Oh, believe me, we do.
No, I'm not implying there's any-
No, no, I don't, I didn't mean it that way, only because we also have to report to the state.
Right.
You know, so everybody's watching what we use, you know, if we use more than we allow to. So there's a lot of things that we have to keep, you know, informing DEP and different entities, our operator, you know, that he also keeps records of that, so we're constantly watching, not to mention that, you know, the big lady here watching.
Yeah.
You know, these homes are built.
Well, and that's one of the biggest issues, you know.
I think-
We went to, from three-quarters to now, everything is one inch.
One inch.
Two services, houses, now one property used to have two services, now they're having four. You know, so we, we on our way to reach our max, so, but sure we're not ready yet.
DeRay's point, he's saying this is April, and, you know, generally speaking, people aren't here as much in April. It really kicks off in May, June.
They're also not irrigated in April.
So, it, but I will say, the more, the newer homes are obviously filled with year-round use in mind, so you probably do have increased use in the off-season. I mean, I've definitely seen it over the last five years, they're-
Yeah, and we, we see them, you know, at least for me, I see more homes that are not really being winterized, because people are coming down, you know, more often, where before they were going to haul, yeah.
I see it, I see it on our block, for sure.
Maybe beneficial just to add a year-to-date, you know, so, you know, this is, this is each month, maybe have a year-to-date and a comparison to the prior year.
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to say, because I know that years ago, we went to, it took a long time to increase the amount of water that we needed for this town. It took years to get that changed, and I think it was done properly, and we guesstimated what we thought we would need. I don't know if that's something we should start thinking about now, comparing, if this continues to go that way, where are we in that-
That took a long time.
Plan.
Yeah. I haven't heard anything so far that we are getting close to that max. We used to go past, and we get fined, and then, you know, we start turning things off, and we don't want to be there anymore.
No, that's what I'm saying.
So, but it's, absolutely, I agree that we should keep an eye on that.
I remember a committee that worked real hard on getting that done.
And when you look at the trash, that's an increase in the trash too, so it just means there's an increase of people here?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
So it's an increase in-
Which we-
Services, yeah, exactly.
I just wouldn't want to be caught the way we were caught before.
Can you add a year-to-date to these numbers for-
Yeah, I'm sure we can, we can have that information for you guys. I'll make a note right here.
Good idea.
Anything else?
Anything for Rocky? Public Works, anything?
Thanks, Rocky.
Want to just stand there for utilities?
What you got?
Are they one and the same? Anything different?
Same stuff. We'll be extremely busy doing all council services. I did talk about the video camera, so we have been using that already. That was a great purchase for us, because now we can do it in-house, when anytime we need it. We take it back, the information back to the shop. We can put it on DVD, we can put it on thumb drives, give it to the engineers, they can then take it and put it, whatever. So that's working out real good versus us having to call a different town to try to borrow their equipment, wait for them, you know, we can do it on, you know, on pace. As you, as you know, we, again, services nonstop, upgrades, bigger stuff. A lot of services being done with the new ordinance, with, you know, it just falls into, into our budget. So just extremely busy, extremely busy. Doing static, following all the guidelines from DEP. They do stop by, they do inspect, you know, we're doing well on everything. The storm drains, the same deal, you know, we keep track of everything. We've been doing inspections of the dock bills to making sure that everything is clean, and the water is flowing the way it's supposed to. And then trying to keep an eye on whoever else might perforate our pockets. Because we always find something somewhere. There's a pipe or something that we were not aware of, that we gotta make sure that it gets, hey, you know, taken care of, like the yacht club. So.
Anything from anybody?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Rocky.
You're welcome.
We have an item for discussion, sandwich signs in the business district?
Is that from me? All the years I've said this? It, it would be something that, something to think about. I notice more and more sandwich signs go up, and we have an ordinance against them, as long as they're on borough property, if they're way back, they're, I think that they can do it. And I had an idea that, just an idea, I feel that in the summertime, you shouldn't have to put a sign out to say that you're open. In the off-season, I think that if we could regulate the size and the time, those people that do decide to stay open, let's just say after Labor Day, would be allowed when the sidewalks are not as congested, off-season to put a sign out, completely regulated by us. It would help the off-season people say, "I'm open, I'm here." It's just a moment in time that, trying to be fair. However, in the summertime, when we have our sidewalks with baby buggies, wagons, bicycles, skateboards, people, everything on it, I know why the borough did that many years ago, because there's just not room for sandwich signs in front of every single store. I'm, I'm one that sees them, and people put them out because they see their neighbor do it, so they think that it's okay to do it, and it's a, it's a high-maintenance thing for the summertime to patrol. So, that was just a peaceful way of thinking for the merchants off-season, not, and then enforce on-season not to have them. So, that's just an idea. It's not just a common sense thing that, you know, you should be open in the summertime, so they shouldn't be on the sidewalk in the fall, and the winter, and the spring. Just allow them to do them, with an ordinance saying what size. We want, would want them all to be uniform. Some of them are very attractive. Just a thought process. Thank you, Jill.
I would certainly think in the off-season, it would be advantageous to the businesses that are open year-round. It would be advantageous to them, they'd welcome it.
Yeah, we've had requests before to allow something like that in, in the off-season. We did talk about it internally in enforcement this morning, actually, because they know when the office leaves, and they tend to, they tend to be putting them out.
Put them out all weekends and at night.
So we are gonna have, a few have been warned. Some are at a point where they will actually be getting their violations, and we are gonna try to enforce it a little bit more before it gets too crazy. We usually, we find that if we, if you, if you go at it hard in the very beginning, then most comply. You always have a couple that will think that they're safe and they put it out, but, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't see any reason.
Any idea what you consider in-season, date-wise?
I'm thinking Labor Day, Memorial Day.
May 1st to October 1st?
Yeah, yeah. Something like that would be great. I think they'd all appreciate it.
Include May, because May's a light, light-
May's light.
Late month, so I would say Labor Day to Memorial Day.
Or just the actual-
Yeah. Yeah, kind of, kind of keep it in line, I assume it suggests to keep it in line with some of our other dates for things.
And, and the meters.
No, you're allowing it, Labor Day, Monday.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, the only thing is with the meters, then they're not gonna get the month of May, which is still kind of light. So maybe the same as beach tags, Friday, Memorial Day to Labor Day.
That makes sense.
And that would be the true season, and then otherwise they can be used. I mean, that could be something we could do.
It also makes sense to do it, because I would think that the original banning of it had a lot to do with traffic.
Yes, right.
There's not that much-
They're in the way.
Right, it's not a safety issue then during the off-season, so as long as they're compliant with our, our measurements, and they're attractive, I don't see a problem. Yeah. And, and we should consider the measurements to be sensible. We don't want this size, we would like this, maybe, whatever. That's why we have to come up with, with parameters, and ask that they remain within our parameters. So I don't know where that belongs.
Public safety.
Public safety. Yeah, that would be through, I would say through ANF.
Figure out a size, what would be the least intrusive and-
I'll, I'll talk with code. There's some of the ones that are a little longer and thinner. You can still get the message on them, and they're not as wide, but I don't know which is more stable. I don't know anything about them, but stable, kind, whatever. And they do make them in plastic, which are really, some really nice ones that just are very, you know, heavy enough, but, anyway.
So if we can get something for us to look at, and then we could get, if we could get a first and second reading done by Labor Day, they could take advantage of it-
Yeah.
This year.
As long as they behave over the summer.
Right.
I don't have any other items of discussion on here.
There's a, bear with me, there's a resolution S-105 on the regular meeting agenda that I'd like to talk about a little bit in the work session. I think this has to do with the fish and wildlife and management of the point. And when I, I heard about the resolution on Friday, and I was quite surprised. And maybe it's because I don't fully understand the protocol and the, you know, how, how council operates administratively and certain things, but the comments that I made at the last meeting about the mayor having councils, I think, having council support and, you know, would like to, to try to address this further. It's the first time the mayor met with them, you met with them alone. Not alone, but without council, with Jill. So, I didn't realize that was going to precipitate a resolution coming down. I think a resolution is, to me, it's kind of a formal, you know, statement that, you know, and I understand that, but I don't know if we need a resolution to do what I was hoping to accomplish. was hoping to accomplish. The, the last thing I want to do is offend anybody at Fish and Wildlife. I want to just get together and work toward an agreeable solution, if there is one, and I know the two members of Natural Resources met with them on Thursday, the 30th. Unfortunately, I, I, I had to work that day, I couldn't go to that meeting, but I, what I'd like to see happen is Fish and Wildlife to come to one of our borough meetings where they can address all the council people at one time, including Mr. Dallowan, who's going to be the new council member, and we can ask all the questions we want to ask, and, you know, try to hammer out whether it's hunting them, uh, and if it, if it ends up that it has to be this method of trapping, you know, that, that might be the answer that we're going to live with, because we don't want the foxes running around the point. It's unfortunate, but it may come to that. So I'm just, I, you know, I, I don't want to go out, I'd hate to see going out with a resolution that may be like, you know, poking the bull. I don't, I don't want to do that. I want to, I want to talk to them here, if they're willing to come here, which I think they are, right? Are they?
I mean, they have said, I think they would.
Well, the reason why the resolution was, because at the end of the work session, it was said, bring something in writing before this council to send to Fish and Wildlife.
Yeah, but I, see, I was assuming it would be like a letter or a memo.
Right.
I wasn't looking, to me, a resolution is a formal, kind of like, this is where we are, and now we're going to do something about it, and I don't want to irritate anybody with this, because I think we're all looking to get to the same place. Unfortunately, the, the final method may not be what all of us would like to see, but it might be one we're going to have to, we're going to have to swallow.
And the resolution itself simply states, talk to us about alternative methods.
I know, I know that...
It doesn't, it, I don't see it as, I personally just don't see it as threatening so much as memorializing the fact that we'll have a discussion. Doesn't, in the end, it may never change.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, and I, and I think technically you're correct, it's just I, uh, like I said, to me, it's kind of a formal, it's, and it's almost too formal. It's like, we're united against this, and, you know...
I don't think it's kind of formal, I think it is formal.
It is formal.
So it's, it's...
Well, was my understanding, we, the consensus was, put something in writing, formal action.
Yeah, no, you're, you're, no, you're right.
Okay, that's the, and just in, to say that's why that's what the next step was, because that's usually the next step when you formalize the action of council, and I thought that's what every, was the consensus.
I, I, I understand that, and I think, and I think that was said, just like, just like you repeated, but I, I, when I see it in a resolution form, I just think it's, it's, I keep using that word, formal, it's too, um...
Restrictive.
Again...
Not re... Well, restrictive, it's formal.
The resolution resolves to have a discussion.
I understand.
We're in an agreement with Fish and Wildlife to conserve the point. This is, this is, and again, I guess the answer is to vote no to the resolution, ultimately. This, I see this as our resolve to enter into discussions about this. We have a management agreement with them, and it says, trap or relocate. So why can't we sit down? And, and let me go back to what, again, and I think the issues are being blurred here again. My initial, my initial reason for bringing this up is because this wasn't brought to us before. This should have been here long ago.
Yeah, but Charles, I'm not, I'm not...
I'd like to, I'd like to just interrupt.
Wait, 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 I'm not, I'm not arguing that point, and, and this isn't about, I know what your concern is with this, and I, and I agree with you, but as you said, and you almost make the point for me, we have, we have an agreement with them, we're partners in this point management thing.
Right, and I want to talk to them, too, I agree.
So let's just sit down and talk to them without firing off any resolutions. Let's invite them to come here, so everyone, including the new council member, can ask all his questions, they can field them, and then, and, and if it, if that doesn't turn out to be a, uh, an agreeable meeting, then, or if that meeting, you know, comes to shouting...
And I hear, I hear what you're saying, I don't, I, I, and that's exactly what we're just saying, just work with us to explore alternative methods.
Yeah, but I don't think we need to do it in this form, is all I'm...
Yeah, okay.
And we did, we did have a, uh, ooh, Natural Resource meeting last Thursday, and Ray could not make it. Reese was there, Lenore was there, Grant, Russ, Jill, and we had a very good meeting, and Christina Davis was there and helped us understand, and we had a really good discussion. So they have said yes, that they would come to a council meeting, two of them, they'd come help explain it, and we did learn a lot, and we also understand that we have a obligation to figure out how to protect our precious point. And again, you're right, we might not all agree on how it is to be done, but technically that is in their hands, and the more we work with them and, and complement what they are proposing, the better we will all be. We need to stay...
Okay, and in your discussion with them, did they say there's any alternative that they would come forward and discuss in your meeting?
Say that, ask that question? They said they'd come and talk to...
Did they, did they say that they would offer some alternatives, or they'll come and explain their method?
They will do both. I, you know, there, there was a misconception, I hope I can say this, they did not use a snare trap, a snare trap...
They used a cable trap.
A snare trap's not legal in many states at all, so there was a misconception there, and I'm learning this as we go along. They gave us, you all got in your box, the Wisconsin, they asked if we would...
Right, and that's, all that being, and I understand all of that, I'm just asking one question, did they say that they would be willing to, to come and talk other options? That's my question. Lenore's shaking her head yes. That's what I'm saying. Did they say, because in our meeting, they said there is no other options. So all I'm asking you is, in your meeting, did they say something different?
It is my understanding that they want to work with us, and there are options.
So we're willing to discuss other options, that's all we're asking for.
And if hunting, and if hunting them is the, is the primary other option, then we, you know, Chief Shutter, we'll have to make sure he's here, because he's going to have to be part and parcel of that, that kind of discussion from the safety end. I just, you know, I, I, I think we've been working together so long with these people that I don't think we need to fire off resolutions. I think we should just invite them here and, and talk it over.
And we have been working well with them, I think this since 2012, between Jill and Lenore and all of us, and the people changing positions, we have probably been the best stewards of the point in years, and that is important to all of us. So I would like to propose what you're saying, is we...
So we'll put the resolution forward, we'll vote it down.
Why even, why even go to that? Why not just table it for now, and allow Natural Resources and Jill and them to order, to, to come together and come up with an idea of coming to us?
The only reason why I hesitate to do that is because the day of a meeting to pull an agenda item, as opposed to we just take formal action and vote it down, rather than deciding last minute to yank something, it's formal action on what's on the agenda.
Voting, voting...
That's fine.
Voting it down speaks for itself.
Right.
That's, you know...
So we'll just...
This is a really passionate idea, and there are two sides to it, and both sides are very passionate about what they do, and I'm proud of both sides, because both sides are protecting nature. That's all that it is.
Correct.
So they, they're, we're not coming to an agreement right now about how we can do this in, um, in a way that satisfies everybody, and I'm not sure that there is a way that's going to satisfy everybody, but I think before we rush into something, that we do need to take our time with it, just as we did with the plastic bags. People were passionate about that until we had this. Now everybody's talking about this.
I would, I would just submit that the difference is, this is not a Stone Harbor issue, so to speak. This is something that U.S. Fish and Wildlife is up against all over the coast. There was last year, a petition submitted to the DEP, 80,000 signatures saying, find another way. This is not something that just Stone Harbor in its little vacuum would like to see done differently. Other mayors within Cape May County are not in support of these methods. I mean, I, I spoke to the, to the mayor of Upper Township, I spoke to the mayor of Avalon, they would like to see more humane methods employed. So I would just admit that this isn't just something that's unique to Stone Harbor, and it is like you, like you're saying, Mantora, it's definitely an emotional issue, and there's definitely passion on both sides. My opinion is, it's just bringing, when you, when you, when you formalize it, Ray, like we would in a resolution, when they are asked time and time and time and time again, and there's no action done, here we are, I think we've been using these same types of traps for 30 years. When does a clear message get sent? We understand your mission, and we support your mission, but you don't operate in a vacuum, and that's the message that I was hoping we could send. And it is not just a Stone Harbor issue. This is, and I would think even themselves, don't they tire of this? Because they deal with this with all these communities all the time.
Well, it's not a Stone Harbor issue, but it, for us, it is.
Yeah, I agree.
So...
It is our issue.
I, I, I just think, you know, in my opinion, we ought to give them the floor, let them explain everything, let us ask everything, and like I said, when all the smoke clears, it may come down to, the best way to do this is with these restraints.
And isn't the resolution, isn't the bottom line of the resolution pretty much that we do that? That we do pursue other avenues and find out what we can do? So the resolution really is underlining what Natural Resources wants to do anyway. So it sounds like...
Right.
That's, that's exactly right.
Without the resolution in place, we're still doing what the resolution is asking.
Not as formal.
Not as formal. And, and nothing for nothing, this is how the borough communicates, this is how we speak. There's a, you know, if a letter comes from Jill, that's a letter from Jill and says, you know, we have some people on council, but not all people, so this is how we communicate as a council.
I understand that, but again, and I won't say it again, but these, these people are partners with us. They're not something that we need to give them formal...
I agree with that.
My initial problem was never been with them, they're doing their job. They have a job to do, they're coming to do it. The problem I have is that we were never notified of what was going on up there.
And that's an, and, and, and that's an easy fix, that, that's, that's a simple thing to straighten out.
I still haven't gotten any answers.
How are we going to, how are we going to control these things is more difficult?
I think we all remember reading last year or the year before about Ocean City, where foxes were roaming the streets. I think in the minds of a lot of the people who are here today, on one side of the piping plovers or the foxes, they're thinking, are we going to end up having these foxes overpopulate? And are we going to see them do what the skunks were doing? And I, I don't, I like to knock on wood, because I haven't seen very many of them around lately, but are we going to allow them to become overpopulated as well?
I don't see people as one side or another. I think everyone here, including people in the audience, would like to see both species flourish. I'm not sitting here taking the side of the fox, I'm not taking the side of the piping plover, one over the other. I'm not going to go there, I don't think anyone is. It's a question of how we approach this issue and how it's handled, humanely, responsibly.
So if that's your pleasure, we will pull it from, from the meeting, it's just a habit that I do not want to make, is, is what it is. Once an agenda is set, it's very easy to just simply stick with the agenda, vote no, and then there is no formal action. That's why.
But in this incident, we didn't, we didn't have, the agenda was set, what, Wednesday? We didn't see the resolution till...
Right, and while it was, it was stated at the work session to bring something formally in writing and forward it, that was definitely the decision. So this, that, and then it was said, you know, that's, that, that's how we communicate, I mean, bring something formal in writing, and that's what was said, that's why that action was taken.
And, and I did ask if we could please discuss this in Natural Resource, so we had one meeting, which was good, but I was sorry that Ray couldn't make it, and I'd like to have another meeting, and I think that if, if we can come to an agreement of some sort to bring it back to council...
Right, but here's the thing, when you have meetings of Natural Resources, you're having meetings of three people, and that, I think under the circumstances, we would like to just have the discussions publicly, and let us, and let everyone be a part of it, because we see that it needs to be discussed, and you're saying they're going to come here, we already said this is happening, they're coming to a council meeting. So we'll move forward with that, correct?
That's fine with me.
Is that, can we, can we do that, can we do that at the next meeting? Are there foxes at the point now, running around, or do we know?
I think, yeah.
We don't know, probably, right?
I suspect, yes, I do.
So we, we ought to do this, I mean, do we have to wait a month to do this, or can we do this?
Two weeks?
Two weeks.
Next meeting.
Okay.
Is the trapping, is it continuing now, or did it end after the 13th to the 17th of May?
I have not received any formal notification of right now, but I just want to clarify